Dishes. Use ours. This is what we do every single day. It's not rocket science. How simple building at me is. So. All I'm saying is that. As you could see with, you know, Adam, there's no joining fee, right? Oops. No quotas. No selling. No starting kids, which everybody else does some other stuff, no auto shipment, no website fee. Unlimited downlines, binary system, incoming ceiling cap, no company has ceiling cap, ours does. So, you know, when you think of all, you know, those MLM, all the people on the top makes the most money. Not without me, we're totally different, totally different. We are independent. Adam, as you know, we are the business, you know, we own the business plan ourselves. You know, platform and inventory distributor channel have been all created for you so simple, so simple. All you need to do is says ride the bus, right? You all know how to ride the bus, we all did one time. We buy the product. Use the product. And we share the product. We're riding the bus every single day. That's it. Simple, so simple guys. So don't make it hard, you know what I mean? The Adam is at our hand. So when you think of, you ponder on it tonight, oh my God, what? Let's see, less fourteen, I'm gonna calculate. Fourteen, we're gonna just round it up to fourteen. One point four million times, I would say about eighty. It's like, what number is this? Oops. Is it twelve croc, is it hundred and twelve?
Yes, eleven crores twenty legs.
Okay.
Hundred and twelve million.
I mean, that's guarantee money. That you're gonna get with Adam, a guarantee, you remember the one million? That's guaranteed, it's gonna be higher than that, I know, but I'm just, you know, just basically. That's guarantee money, guys. So. Adam is huge, as small as you think, but it is huge. And you know, you say, oh, I've been working one year, two years, nothing happening, you know? It takes time. But you're not doing, I mean. Even though you quit or whatever, you always, if you have active account, you could always come back. That's what's so amazing about Adam. If you, somebody is going somewhere else to search, oh, this doesn't work. But make sure before they leave, say, you know what? Please keep your account active, because you never know what's gonna happen when you come back. Don't leave, go do something else, okay, do whatever, but leave your account safe. Buy at least one product every year and see what happens. And they, when they come back, one leg is, it's like what giant organization? That it's already been made for them. Without any of their effort, none of their effort. But yet they could capitalize on that. What company does that? And in all the PV that been accumulated, guess what? It doesn't go away until you get a commission. What company does that? When you bottomly think about all those things, what company out there does that? None. None whatsoever. So this is, you know, enemy's company that capitalize on other people's hard work, but yet. You don't have to feel guilty because guess what? You're the one who introduced them to use daily necessity that is good for them. Good for them. You haven't introduced anything that's gonna harm them. You should feel good about what you do every single day. Not feel guilty, not feel pressured or anything like that. You should be proud every day when you talk to someone and giving them the opportunity of building Adam or using our product. Or just to share. And just listen to people, sometimes they just need someone to talk to and we're listening. And when we listen, when if we really listen to what they're saying, you will find an opportunity. In Adam, he what they need. It could be the product. It could be the opportunity. It could be the business, whatever it is, you will find something or even just a friend. That they never knew. So Adam gives a lot to individual. So don't think, oh, I'm not doing anything. When you share Adam, you're absolutely doing something to change your life and theirs also. So give yourself an opportunity to talk to even stranger, don't be. Don't be afraid to talk to stranger, that is both in the best prospect that you could do. Because you never know how you're gonna touch their heart or mind. Or their health. So I'm grateful every single day to our chairman, you know, because he didn't stop, he pursued, right? There's so many times that he wanted to give up. In this business, but he didn't. And that's where we're gonna go. And we're gonna be there for our downlines and our partner said, come on, let's go. I know you're tired, but let's go. Never giving up, you got to be that hand. To hold, you know, anything you could offers that I'm here for you. I mean, there's much not, you know, there's much I cannot do, but I'm here for you, I'm here to listen, you know, give you guidance. Whatever it is. So I just thank all of you who's on our Zoom. Every single day with our diamond master Vasu, who's so intelligent, so amazing, right? So brave, I would say. To really believe in Adam and he jumped all in, just like I did. I jumped all the way in, I quit everything and I jumped in, not knowing what was going on. At least Vasu has some experience, I think all of you have some experience in network marketing. I didn't, I was in the corporate world. I didn't know nothing about building passive income or network marketing, but then again, every day, that's what I was doing. Network marketing, talking to people, telling them that, you know, do, you know, use my products, right? So, guys. You have a huge two point two billion hours and it's growing. And India had just started in a sense. Capitalize every opportunity. Yes, it's a hard work, I'm not gonna say it's easy. Vasu knows it's not easy, Danish knows it's not easy. But yet we're pursuing because we know the end, we know where we're going and we see, like I said, the, the, the numbers never, never lie. Numbers never lie. And what Adam provides is always there, what our chairman promises is always there. Always, that's something that you could trust. And that's hard these days with the corporate world, if they don't need you, they cut you out, no questions asked, right? And no time, you say you're let go in corporate world, these days, at least before they give you two weeks or one month. Now, next day, your job is gone, you know, you're out. People are hurting. But guess what, regardless, they lose their job. They have to buy toothbrush and toothpaste, shampoo their hair, so they're gonna go out. And look for their daily necessity. When you reach out to them and give him the opportunity, you know? Have you ever thought about becoming a millionaire, just selling toothbrush and toothpaste? They never thought about it. And that's something that whole world needs. So. You have amazing leader. Who's guiding you guys over there. Take advantage of his knowledge, because you know, some leaders, they don't, they don't give you knowledge. Boss is always giving you knowledge, he's sharing everything that he knows. This is what the atom is all about, we don't hold back like a corporate world, you gotta know all things by yourself because you're afraid they're gonna take your job away, right? With Adam, the more he teaches you how to become individual, right, business owner. You're gonna get better, but then again, it benefits him automatically for him to teach you how to build a business. So he's not holding anything, he wants to give you all the information to become who you could be. He want you to be Imperial Master quickly, probably before him, because he knows when you do, he will go there automatically. So it's not about holding anything, it's giving, Adam is about giving, 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 giving for your support, your, you know, for your business to explode. So if you have any different mentality about, you know, any leaders who's trying to help you, it's not because, oh, I could be better, no, no, no. They do it because they want you to be better. Because if you do, of course, everybody's gonna benefit and that's okay. It's okay, we're all going to same place, no different place, all same place. How fast we get there is all depends on I, you know, our time limit, our ability and how much we work, it's all up to us individually. But then again, there's no jealousy, right? There's, you know, there's nothing, it's not a, you know, it's like, it's not a. Had you said in corporate world. We step on each other to get to the top with us, we don't do that. So, and our company is not going anywhere, it's solid, very solid. So thank you for believing in me, thank you for believing in Vasu, thank you for believing in me to follow us and. Sharing our vision together to make the whole. India, the most amazing, the Hydra Bot. Eight, you know, ATM education, I want all leaders come there first, you know, I would love that. So keep up the good work and always challenge yourself, without challenging yourself with Adam, it's gonna be hard to. Move up in mastership, it is a challenge, but we have to go through that. Because when we process going through that, we learn so much, what to do, what not to do, what I'm gonna do better, how to prepare, right? And how to plan, because if you don't, you will never learn, isn't that right, Diamond Master Vasu? You got to challenge yourself, regardless, you're gonna fall or not, right? You gotta make the leap. When you said, I'm gonna do it. You're gonna know, okay, you, you just have to do it because there's no way that I could explain, there's no way that Diamond Master could explain. The gratitude, the hardship, the joy, the attention, everything that you experience when you go through the match, mastership. But then again, we grow through that. We grow and we know what to do next, that's the only way we're gonna grow, guys. So please challenge yourself, right? And as a team. As a team, and you know, if we're sure, we're all coming together to support you. But if you, you know, if you sit back and it's, oh, my leaders or my download, no, you gotta do it. And that's when the leader's at the end, okay, he's doing it, come on, everybody, let's make this happen, right? And I'm getting goose chills just thinking about it. Because it's hard, guys, but it's so rewarding, so rewarding. I know Boss didn't sleep, I didn't sleep, you know, we're putting numbers together, everybody talking each other, you know, trying to pull through. But it's excitement as a, you know, it's ten, you know, tension, pressure, pressure, right? But it's exciting at the same time and saying, you know what? We did it, not I did it, we did it. So, Diamond Master, I am so, so honored to have you on my team as my leader. I'm so blessed to have all of you, all of you, seriously. And if I don't say enough. I'm telling you now, I am very grateful for every one of you, every one of you. But as a leader that I have, boss puts out so much, I know. And he believes Adam is just like I do. And he's giving you blood sweats sometimes, right? And sometime I, I'm sure he's holding back tears because he's a human too, you know? But I'm sure a lot of people want so much from him not knowingly, but he's only one person, guys. So step in to help, even ask, what can I do for you? That's what. Team is all about. I love you guys. I hope you guys just make your plans and dream and write it down. And go for it, whatever it might be, you know, semi, sales, you know, diamond, share, whatever it is. Set your goal and one day you guys will get there. Thank you, Diamond Master.
Thank you, madam, really, we are lucky. Having like applying you. So thank you all the leaders.
Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning.
Yeah. We are blessed actually, like yesterday leader, you, we are having, we are. Actually, and we are thanking to God. Boss also is giving us good knowledge, as you said, like he's giving each and every point to everyone in easy methods. And he is trying to push our products and as well as to improve our knowledge and then as sales, everything he's taking care. I, till yesterday, I think the climate was horrible, now it was changed to rainy season and climate cold here. And now July first, we are focusing on the marketing and sales and this TV's actually matching TV's we want now. That is, that will give us the posting actually, so still now we have focused on the making. This team build and building only, and right now we are focusing on the TV's. This month almost we will do our goals also, we have to achieve our goals. So that according to that and all the way, we are also very lucky to have you as our great leader, ma'am. I met you, you, we are very blessed actually, hiring you as our leader, thank you, ma'am, thank you.
Yes, thank you, sir. Thank you, thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Sam Reddy, sir. Thank you. Chinnah question and the other team members. Usain, welcome, sir. Usain, sir. Sadaanandangar.
Sam Reddy, hand right, yes, sir, sir.
Just a, just a second, sir, one minute, Sam Reddy, sir. Sadaanandangar or Usain, sir. Nara, yes, sir. Sadaanandangar, welcome. Uh, yeah, yes, sir. Sadaanandangar, welcome, sir. Yeah.
Good evening, friends.
Yes, sir, good evening, me, a play, sales master.
Sales master, Nagarajan, sir.
Okay, correct, me, sales master, Nagrasgaro. Diamond master, ever, sir, sir.
Nag, tell you, sir, diamond master.
The sales master, me, girl, sir.
Uh, call only, sir. Only talking. Call only, sir, call this, sir, next week.
Okay. So me, who, diamond master, they, leaders.
Tell you, sir, tell you, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Sadaanandangar, thank you, sir. Usain, welcome, sir.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir, born, Nara.
Uh, born, answer.
Yeah, me, sales master, just, sir, me, who.
My sales master, took, I'm, that's, not, I mean.
Come, English, class, sales master, player, sir.
Uh, that is. Uh, especially, and ending, sales master, Galad, my sales person, Nagras. My. I can, sir, sir, I'll, I'll, guys.
Me, diamond master, ever, just, sir, me.
My diamond master, I think she, Chris, girl, and, of course. There, diamond, yeah, yeah. I, yeah, I'm, tell you, sir, bring, I, 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 tell you, the, the, the.
Who's, who's, sir.
Tell you, sir, that, I, I, tell you, score, I'm, I'm.
I, I'm, diamond master, call, yes, sir.
Okay, sir. Okay, sir.
Okay. Inka, pain, later, sir, I, just, me, who.
My, who, pain, ever, and, yes, lady, girl, tell, and.
Sir, me, me, team.
My team, pain, I, tell you, sir, now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Usain, sir.
Thank you, sir, thank.
So, inka, other team members, everyone, or, in, 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 in. ATM group, Kaku, and other team members, everyone, or. So, ever, there. So, to, and, and, inka, ATM group, key, and, the, okay, I'm, under, I don't, just, conference. So, me, sales master, ever, me, tell, so, only, regular, connect, out, I, me, okay, I'm, under. Me, diamond master, ever, me, tell, so, only, regular, connect, out, I, me, okay, I'm, under. Me, Sharon Rose, master. If, or, I'm, not, like, other team, ever, na, AP, and, Telangana, low, A, team, member, na, this, only. Vala, painunatvanti, Sharon Rose master. Valan connect. I think ikudunatvanti chala mandi negira, uh A D madangar number. So, ante manik ikkada, anta avakas mundi, develop. So, e system low, sarayinatvanti leader, ante genunga business. Uh, okar manak connect. So, tadne me, uh small team. Atla ne chinnal leader. Uh, manik ikkada, Eli the education center. Alane, America low, madangar ka education center run justa. Seattle low. So, all over the America, USA, more than five hundred education centers. But any low koda, service. Turnover paranga, first two place low unatvanti education center, madangar. So, atvanti first two place low unatvanti education center ni run justa koda. Every Friday, manam meeting connect. Manam dani ela opayginchkovali, dani anta mandi. So, dani chubichkoni anta business. So, ifro, ifro matlanatvanti, Ustain garu. Sadhanandam garu. Valu, as a education center leader. Aka diamond master. Manas center. Manak caden. Manas success. So, valu business. But ikkada, ante, manam, manam edru ga plate. Uh, manak kavals. So, adi, doramayinapurthelisadi. So, vaka leader lekunda, etakita manadi ikkada, impossible definitely. Uh, but, neen kastupadi sales master work. After that, madangar lanti leaders connect. Diamond master. So, indakana madangar matlarta, meru gamanichareledo, ama kalalo nilu. Challenges, atvanti lot of challenges ni face. Ikkada nelbadugalutavanna, undike lagalutavanna, so, meem, etvanti challenges. Ma, ma kundetvanti badalu, uh, whatin etla netkun, undike eltena, etla manage. Team low, okokarokkumood, okokarmentality, okokarak. Okakna rose. So, what anytni koda balance. Evenni chasekunda koda, education center. Meru phone. Kavals. Connect. Not even our, manati meka, A team member. Also, sorry, chatvanti information. Service. So, adhe, service, madangar number, chala mandi. So, manati. Tana dwara, nakku last fortnight low, mana, team low, evan dwarano, some US low sponsor. Uh, nearly seven lakhs. So, that's why neenu, semi sales master. Ivala morning nchi, pakkalaksha P V, evan chaseste. So, evanni kavali. Kachitanga, madangar. Unni, unnu nilabadali, ikkara I D. Dani active. So, mere I D ni activega petukoni, aadatha, padatha, nijangan business. Adakonto court. Adi, US dollars. Mana India low, guaranteega, adi court. Any rose. Me I D ni just activate. Every year, vaka product. Uh, Anil money, new vaka diamond master, Karuna. Vala Mrs. Sorry friends, uh power. So, Anil money, Anetvanti person, diamond master. Uh, chani potte, vala misses, ivala, a business ni, every week ama account. Average. So, ela unta life, ama I D ni, aina. Mobile. No, aim kastupada. Digo bank details, prati mangala varan. So, avakata. He is living life very well, idhar pillal, chinnapillal betkun, prati meeting attend. Ninnagoda ka video neenu share. So, field work. Aka education center. So, atvanti, antak minchinatvanti leader, vaka Sharon Rose master ni, ikkada connect. So, manati ki, unatvanti adrusta, so, tanu, Friday rose meeting connect. Akka de, chepedvanti visyalni, manam ela connect. So, idanta koda, meru, upayginchkovali ke, definitelyga success. So. Atvanti leader, manik ikkada service. Value, uh, unnavala. I know, chala mandi leaders, uh, sales master. Chala mandu. Even mana, A P Telangana low. So, diamond master. Valantatu valuga, anta knowledge. But, atvanti leader, manik ikudunar, vaka global leader, manik ikkada, andu. Tanu US low unna gani, anta busyga unna gani, every week manak connect. So, at least, next week nchana, me team members ni, at least five, Friday rose. Kontamandani, uh, invite chesi, attend. So, tanan chupichchesi, mir business. He is earning monthly five lakhs. So, tana age is sixty four years, sixty four plus, I age low, tanu workout chasekoni. Opportunity ni upayginchkoni, anta sampanichkogali. Ikkudu unatvanti, prati okrami, amakante. Sixty four plus. So, we have that opportunity. So, anta service manam chayachu, uh, evan, evan. Vala problem solve chesi, vala. Feedback. Anta happy. So, evan na, me regira product. Malli repeated. Etla unta. We are experience, uh, experiencing that feelings every day, prati rose. Feelings. So, valu chinapuru, malli valaki, ingo product. Ingov product. Users ga, tire. Vaka kotta customer ni tire. Unna customer ni, pati mandi customers. One new customer, uh, one old customer is equal to ten new customers. Pati mandi kotta customers ni, mir create. Vaka unna customer. Atami, definitelyga, atvanti products. Whatidwaran mana, anta business. So, opportunity ni prati okar. Evra ite ikkada, leaders, uh, manali connect. So, valani gourvinch. Method. E meeting low, tanu ipudo anta kastupadi, manik ikkudu. Valak akkada, morning, I think six thirty or seven. Ah time ki tanu ready aii, education center. Anta achievement. Manaki, okay information. So, dani manam etla. E pati mandi, pati hem mandi, pati har mandi. Any rose. So, tanu manali connect. Uh, use. Anta pedda leader. So, next week nchi, at least, evra ite ikkada, uh, meru, next level. Me tarfuna minimum, pati mandi meeting. Minimum, pati mandi, pati mandi, me tarfuna meeting. You are growing automatically, mek telekunda, mek team grow. So, tanan chupichi, tana age ni, tana experience ni, tana income ni, tana maatal ni chupichi. Tanan chupichchesi businesses. A chubichkodani ki, manaki, so, manam neglect. Ardan chasekun friends, at least, next to Friday. E, e number, double eight. Next to Friday ki, thirty members, target. Ah, next to Friday ki, forty, at least, ten, ten members. So, anta mandi, na topad kalustarandi, next to Friday ki, kothava. Keshrin Vasgaru, thank you sir, Bali garu. Samradigaru, Ravi Kumar garu, Dasa Rajni garu, Kesu Kumar garu. Chanti garu, great madam. Great.
Sir, kuch kena chari te, hame bhi batayenge, sir, kya kena chari.
Yeah, we are connecting Sharon Rose master, every Friday in this meeting. Okay. Bali garu avakas. Or Kesu Kumar garu.
Jee, Dinesh bhai. Dinesh bhai, are you able to.
Jee, jee, jee.
Ya. Abir, apna Sharon Rose master.
Jee.
Ye, ye madam. Udar subba. Six thirty.
Okay.
Atta subba utke aakhe, vo, education center. Mumbai ke, yusat karna. Ek, do, vente, pehle, utke, apan, ni, aa ra.
Jee.
Apna liya.
Apna.
Bilkun sir, apne liya.
Apne liya ra, apan to, cha, panchaadmi, desaadmi, pandraadmi hai to, uspe maza nahi. Uthu bada leader. Bata nek, jarat nahi. Abi apna, apun dekha. Uh, apna team hai, vo parwala kon hai, kisi ko bhi nahi. Abi, vaso sir, pochra ta, apka sales master kon hai, diamond master. Nam sahi bol sakta nahi, dusra team. Magar, apna A T M team. Ye, Eddie master, last year, last year, August me aaya tha, ya, Hyderabad. Do din. Ya, humara saath bhi tha, mai bhi tha, saath me madam ke saath, hum dona bhi tha, aisa. Itta help karne ko, she is ready to help us. So, utilize, unka chehra dikha ke, apan to, itta bada leader. Apan, aur thodi. Unka chehra dikha ke, bhagwan ko dikha ke, apan ka. Unse sabko baat karne ko jarat. Jee. Abi, vo parwala, apna ghar me, sab, ek, chalane wala achha hai, itta sab ghar me bhi achha.
Bilkun.
Now, she got emotion, unka chehra me, paani me, aankh me, paani me, aas. Ho bhi, oh, she was feeling, aisa, vo thu boat, achcha sensitive. And she is sixty four age.
Bilkun, bilkun, bilkun.
But, she is very dynamic and young lady. All the time, we, we appreciate her, having such a great leader with us, working with us. Actually, she is, kabi bhi, A T M team ke liye, Friday. Compenser, she is coming and joining with us, ek din bhi miss nahi.
Bilkun.
Abi mai bhi bahas aake, turan. Kemal, mera bahat. But, I will try to see her face at least, dekha.
Thank you.
Okay. Samajh gaya.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dinesh. Uh, Dinesh bhai, next, next week on words, invite all your team.
Okay.
Just show our Sharon Rose master, she is our Sharon Rose master, she is earning four to five lakhs per month. She is a global leader, just to show and do the business. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you all the leaders, so, almost to eight, nine, ten members. Uh, hand raise. Ten into two, talavake idherni, ipudunala. Kothava. Talavake idherni. Next to twenty members. Mana vaka sixteen, thirty six members, next to Friday meeting. Challenge. So, itvanti challenges ni, manam, prove. Automatica, manam, next level. So, mere kothava. E meeting. Me team low. Prayatan. So, atvanti leader, manak service. Uh, thank you all the leaders, uh, yes sir, Samradigaru, welcome sir. Telugu, telugu.
Good evening, early. To all the atomians and our beloved Sharon Rose master. Eddie Fortman. Uh, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, I am very pleased to your prayer to that lady. Punamrai.
Yes.
Recovering, she is recovering slowly, she is using everyday three sachets of Imohim. Pharma grenade gel, nutraceutical mix, spiruluna, she is using. So, she is feeling somehow better, but she is unable to walk madam, that is her problem. She is unable to walk and she is telling my legs are very number, that means. Unable to even, put a step forward. That is there. Anyhow, she will recover, we are praying to her now, thank you, on her side also.
I will text. After the zoom.
Okay ma'am, okay sure. I, and now I am talking in Telugu madam, uh, Mr. Vasu asked me to speak in Telugu. So, intha ka, Sharon Rose master, Eddie Fortman. Manake, chala abuthamayna leader. Vasu pomidi is there, atana chala knowledgeable, atana chala hardworking. Alage, manji dedicated leader. So, mere, atana services. Adakali. First point. So, atarvata, intha ka Vasu. Manake, prapanchunlo anta mandi. Manake Sharon Rose master. Alage, am paino. Unup madangar. Manake, regular ka meeting. Alage, man teams. E majja kuncham break. What, manam pick up. Ipuddeeshkun. Vakan nchi, idharum. Ikadonna, pati hem mandi, forty five members. So, mano, hamar. Sharon Rose master ki, mano, number of people. Meeting. Am, man nunchi. Oh, man, manak chala knowledge. By morning six thirty. Dani manam upayginchkovali. Pratyokkaram koda, gathar. Madangar services. Alage, madangar, day to day, manam gamanist. She is looking like thirty six years and reversing her age. So, neenam madangar. She is very nice and. Treat chesto, how to improve business. Kabat manam. Chala. Manandana koda, Vasu. Manak koda diamond master. She will support, all of us are to become diamond masters like Vasu, I am telling you ma'am. So, ikkada, pratyokkara. Chala avenues. What, manam properka. Pratyokkaram koda ikkada, Sharon Rose master. Alage, imperial master. Manakite, last meeting. Delhi low, Vasu. So, manak anta, systemized. Kunchan jager. Focus. We can succeed. Thank you, thanks a lot.
Thank you, Samradigaru, great sir. Uh, yes sir, Bali garu and. Any other leaders. Dasa Rajni garu. So, evan na, madangar. Okay, thank you leaders. Thank you madam, thanks for your, uh, regular support.
You most welcome, we're all in it together, as we, you know, I said.
Uh, we are taking challenge for the next Friday. At least thirty members in June meeting.
That's good, you know, it's always good to have one, this one person, who you think is gonna help you build. Or even people who wants to know a little bit more about Acme, why not, you know, just invite them.
Yes. Sure madam, uh, definitely, uh, we will work on that, thank you. Yes friends, uh, anyone, evan na. Otherwise, we will close this session, morning six o'clock key, training program. Morning six o'clock. Thank you all, thank you madam. His leaders, andro voda. For the company moto. Active. Are you ready for moto?
Yes.
Yes.
Cherish the spirit. Come on, come on, let's do it. Come on, come on, let's do it.
Come on, come on, let's do it.
Thank you all.